Good afternoon, everybody. This is the Town of Chatham Planning Board Hybrid Meeting for September 29, 2025. My name is Charlene Greenhouse, and I'll be the Acting Chair for this evening as our crew is not available. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for schedule and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording, if you would notify the Chair at this time, it would be appreciated. And I'm guessing no one is recording. The call-in number for this meeting is 1-508-945-4410. Conference ID is 515-763-6-POUND. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March 28, 2025 signing of Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025, extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until June 30, 2027. This meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number and using the conference number that I already noted, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, Xfinity Channel 1072, despite our best efforts, we will not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town website as soon as possible. At this time, I will note that Bob Dubus and Catherine Halpern are also absent this evening, but in attendance, let's do a roll call vote. I'm actually going to start with Frank Shear.
Present.
Bob Werschef.
Present. Welcome.
And Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, present.
And I'm Charlene Greenhouse, and I am also present. The first item on the agenda are the meeting minutes of September 8, 2025. I know I had one very minor change that I noted, and it's on Page 2, and it is the third full paragraph, second line at the very end. It says, "Within four months, it should be within seven months." Did anyone else have any corrections or amendments?
I have a question. We, the minutes have to reflect what actually occurred.
And I believe I said seven months.
You believe you said seven?
I believe I said seven months.
Okay, very good.
Seeing no other changes, can I entertain a motion, please, to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Warren Chain, second.
I'll do a roll call. Warren?
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob?
Approve.
Frank?
Frank approves.
And Charlene Greenhouse, I approve. Thank you very much. The next item in the agenda is continuation of the public hearing for 104 Kroll Road. This was, Terry Eldridge presented this. As there is no one present this evening, I would entertain a motion to continue this matter to October 27th, the next regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote. Frank?
Approve.
Bob?
Approve.
Warren?
Warren Chain, approve.
And Charlene Greenhouse, I approve. And just getting my things in order here. The next item on the agenda is the site plan approval for 71 Kroll Road. They have requested a continuance to the 27th of October. Do I hear a motion to continue?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Warren Chain, second.
Roll call vote. Frank? Bob?
Approve.
Warren?
Approve.
Charlene Greenhouse, approve. Moving right along, the next item, and I do believe we have Susan Ledoux with us via Zoom. Hi, Susan.
Hi.
This is a release of covenant for 35 and 50 Stetson Cove Lane. Susan, if you would like to present this?
Yeah, just quickly, Susan Ledoux from Eastward Companies. And we've been hired by the Watts family to demolish the existing houses and build the new homes, just so you have a little background on our role in this. And we are requesting a full release, which are lots 27, 27A, 28, and 28A of the Planning Board covenant in order to be able to apply for demolition and building permits on the lots. And so we are, I submitted a construction estimate for the driveway that's required to the rear lot or with what will be 35 Stetson Cove Lane. And we've presented that, I think it's at the back of your packet, the estimate, and I believe it's $65,200 for the cost to install that driveway as it was proposed and approved by the board last year. And so we are proposing to post that as security for the release of the lots. And that's my presentation. I can answer any questions. And just as an aside, we feel the existing driveway to the structures that are there now will suffice as far as the construction for the new homes, and we prefer to hold off on putting the new driveway in so that it's not disturbed during the construction and all the movement on the site by vehicles and such. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I have one question, and that is the proposed driveway. You'll have to refresh my memory as to whether or not it's to be pervious or impervious. In other words, gravel such as is there already, or is it going to be asphalt?
It's my understanding that we're, it's going to be a gravel or reclaimed asphalt surface. Yeah. I don't, I don't, I haven't been, I haven't seen anything that says that it will be paved. I believe it's going to be the same as what is there.
Frank, did you have something?
Yeah, partly because I'm so new to the board, but I'm wondering whether we could run down each of the covenants and have an explanation as to why they should be released. Does that make sense?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you say, as to why what?
Well, we have 11 covenants, I guess, or more than that if you, and I'm wondering whether we could just run down quickly. It may only take a minute or two and explain why it should be released now.
Oh, why it should be released now?
Yeah.
I'm confused on the 11 covenants.
Well, I was looking at this, which is the...
Conditions on the statement of conditions, maybe?
Yeah, exactly.
Oh.
Right. So if we go down, to help me as to why we should release.
I mean, I don't know specifically why the planning board at the time chose what they chose to add in here. I mean, there are certain things that happen each time.
Sure.
But I can, I can tell you like in a general sense. I mean, basically, the first thing just talks about whatever is on the definitive plan that was proposed. So like any new, any new subdivision plan that you see.
Okay.
The second thing is so that we make sure we have it by a licensed professional. You want to have a, you know, a certified PE, you know, professional engineer, or you want a surveyor or something like that.
And when does that happen?
Once the work is completed, they are required to submit an as-built plan before we would release the bond.
Okay, so we're releasing the covenant but not the bond? Is that why this?
They're seeking to switch from the, a release of the covenant in place thereof of a bond.
I see. So the bond will cover all of the...
Yes.
Okay. I'm fine.
The reason that that happens is so that they can build on the lot. So that's why they want to do that, and we want to cover the cost to make sure that they actually don't disappear prior to construction being completed and leaving people in a...
Okay, so all the conditions are still, like utilities underground and all of that are still going to be?
Yes.
Okay.
And the only thing that's being requested this evening is the request of covenant, not the statement of conditions. So they still need to abide by the statement of conditions.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I did have one thing, and thank you, Christine, for noting it in the, in the staff report. In my former world as a planner, there was always a contingency, because you don't know how long it's going to take for the work to be done, and if it takes a couple of years for the work to be completed, the costs are going to be greater. In, in other communities I have worked in, it's been 150% of, so one and a half times what the bond or what the, the cost estimate is. And that would be $97,800. I personally am more comfortable with that. I've seen, and in discussions with Christine, we've both seen in communities that we've both worked in where things have happened and the town ends up having to eat something. So no disparaging about the, you know, Susan Ledoux and Eastward Companies at all, but I think it's a good practice to have a contingency, especially for a subdivision.
Sometimes what has happened here from speaking to Katie is that because of Bob Dubus's expertise, he'll, he'll kind of go over things in advance, but by the time we had received this, he was already away. And he's not going to always be on the board, or, you know, he could be away or be something. So maybe a standard practice going forward might be a wise idea. And, I mean, again, the cost of materials, everything is changing so much, it's particularly important now, more than ever.
I'm fine.
I'm fine with the one and a half. I don't think Bob's expertise changes the matter that the prices, that we need more protection. So I, I think if that's what is standard in most other towns, I think that we should do the same.
Warren?
The other thing you should also keep in mind is that the, the applicants can go and as they get work done, they can request, they don't have to request a full amount. They can request, you know, installments along the way.
And they're going to want to get it done as fast as possible anyway. That's...
Warren?
I was going to bring it up when we got to the, to the posting of the bond. I agree, 150% sounds fine. It can be reduced along the way if it appears appropriate. But the estimate that we have, largest item in it is, is listed as reclaimed asphalt service. So to me, that says it's proposed to be asphalt. And I am not the drainage expert around here, but there's, the properties here are very close to wetlands. I'm not sure if it matters that we, to me, it doesn't matter at all, but I'm not the expert to know if it should matter to the board as to whether it is to be paved or gravel. My vague recollection confirmed by the applicant was that it, they thought it would end up being gravel, which I'd have no, no complaints about. But the question here with respect to the bond would be if it's not asphalt, it would be a lot less than $15,000 for the surface. So it would affect the amount of the bond, obviously.
Actually, when I read it, and I read reclaimed, that to me spoke to, actually, a pervious surface, because oftentimes they will reclaim the asphalt. But Susan, if you want to just clarify that?
Yeah, it will be a gravel surface. It's just called reclaimed asphalt. If we were going to be paving, we would have said paved, or a final code, a first code of pavement, a final code of pavement. So it's as per plan that was approved, but I did not resubmit the road profile and plan, but it is, I think, detailed on that and is approved. And as far as conservation, both properties have orders of conditions, and both have been, proposed houses on the lots have been approved in the site work. So the Conservation Commission is well aware of what's proposed for the site, and the resource areas will be well protected, and we will have a limit of work fence between the houses in the wetland area. And as you probably know from looking at the plans, the driveway is the farthest item on the site from the wetland area. So hopefully that answers the question.
No, that's very helpful. Thank you. I mean, to me, reclaimed asphalt means they're taking chewed-up asphalt surface and mixing it with brand-new asphalt to come up with the pavement. So I'm very happy to hear that that's not the case. So the only other comment I'd have is whether we need a single bond or two, because we have the requirement for a two-year maintenance of the, of the road.
That won't be until such time as the road is completed and everything has been released from the statement of conditions, as well as the bond being released. At that time, the board would impose the $1,000 bond for the two-year maintenance agreement.
And so it's clear that that won't be forgotten in the two years it takes to build something?
That will not be forgotten.
Okay, then I have no further comments. Thank you.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to release the covenant for 35 and 50 Stetson Cove Lane, lots 27, 27A, 28, and 28A in exchange for a, is it a cash performance bond or some other?
It will be a check.
It would be a check, so a cash performance bond in the amount of $97,800?
Seconded?
No, somebody has to say so moved.
So moved.
Thank you.
All seconded, Frank.
Okay, roll call vote. Frank?
Approve.
Bob?
Approved.
Warren?
Approve.
Charlene, approve. Thank you very much. Bye, Susan.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
You can reach out to the Community Development Office about how the submission works, okay? Thank you.
Will do. Thank you. Bye.
Next, we have a release of statement of conditions for 33 Cleo Lane. Is John Broderick present?
He's online.
He's online? Oh. Hello, Mr. Broderick. Would you like to explain what you're looking for, sir? I think you're muted.
Sorry. Yep.
There you go.
I'm good now. Yep. So I'm looking at release of the conditions of the building permit on 33 Cleo Lane.
Christine, would you like to...
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Would you like to add to that, Christine?
I'm sorry, I thought you were breaking up a little bit. Can you say again what?
I am looking to be released of the conditions of the building permit at 33 Cleo Lane.
Yeah, okay. So Mr. Broderick has requested, it was a one-lot subdivision that was amended in 2024. Both Art and I have been out there a couple of times and gone over things with his engineer, and we have looked at construction. So the work has been completed as requested. When I was reviewing the application again today, just to get ready for the meeting, I did notice that one of the items in the statement of conditions from this one was for the two-year maintenance agreement, which is similar to what we just had for the other one, and a bond of not less than $1,000. That would be released after the completion of the two-year piece of it, but there is no concern with releasing this particular property from the statement of conditions. Obviously, we would, you would sign the form tonight if you approve of it, and then we would give it to Mr. Broderick upon submission of the check to the planning, the Planning Board office for submission to the...
Treasurer's office.
The Treasurer's office for the $1,000, which again would be released after the 2,000, after the two-year agreement. And we would also need a copy of a, of a maintenance agreement, which we would give him a pretty standard one that we work from.
I just want to be sure...
I have to say, on my behalf, I'm the only one that takes care of the road. My other two people on the road don't take care of it at all. So it's, it's, it's always been up to me. My director butler is, is the owner of Delmar Properties, and he does not really take care of his property at all. He just rents it. So I'm just, I'm just saying that, I mean, I'll put the $1,000 up, but I'm the only one that takes care of the road, because otherwise the town won't plow it. And I've, I always look at the Cape Cod Chronicle, and they, they always tell me whether or not it's up to, up to snuff, if you will, to be plowed by the town. So anyways, I, so you need me to bring the Planning Board a check for $1,000?
Hold on one second. The other thing I want to make sure that you're aware of, that this has nothing to do with the building permit. You said something about the building permit. This is actually the statement of conditions regarding the subdivision, just so we're clear on that.
Okay, okay. Well, yeah, I'm, I'm new to this.
Nope, that's quite all right. Do any of the board members have any questions? And see, Warren, this is a catch where they caught that we need to do the maintenance agreement for two years.
Well, first, I just wanted to recognize that the applicant has submitted different photographs of the property, which are really to replace those that were sent to the board, because the ones sent to the board are not of his property. So I'd like to make certain that we recognize that the proper photographs are in-house and, and held. And also that the department write-up on this item incorrectly lists the address as zero Cleo Lane, and I believe it's 33.
It's, it's 33. It started at zero.
On the plan, it's zero, so we would reference the plan.
But we do, on the revised piece that I gave you today, we have to put 33 once they get assigned an address?
Okay, this is fine. As long as it's...
I have been signed, I have been assigned an address by the town.
I just don't want it to be a source of confusion in the records when somebody goes looking for something that doesn't exist or is incorrectly described. The maintenance agreement, I recognize it was on the board when we, we, we put that in. We thought there might be a significant amount of damage to the gravel road, and, and somebody needed to take care of it. And therefore, that requirement that there be a bond at the end to take care of it was put in. I don't have a strong feeling either way about that. I think there's enlightened self-interest on the part of the people that are using it, including the applicant, to ensure that it's passable. Certainly, there's no damage to, in, in my estimation, to the road that was there before any construction began. So there's been a year and a half plus of construction without any damage that I can see. So I don't have a strong feeling about it, nor am I exactly sure that we have accurately, accurately defined what we would have in the future specified constituted a maintenance And so if we choose to have a bond for a maintenance agreement, I think we ought to decide here and now what, what it is that maintenance constitutes maintenance. As I say, I don't see anything at the moment that suggests that anything needs to be repaired or any maintenance is currently required, but those are just my comments.
Maintenance agreement, if I might, is to ensure that two years from now, it looks like it does today, and it hasn't degraded.
No, I understand that.
It looks better, it looks better now than it did even before the construction started. I put two tons of dense grade through the road, and I filled up all the ruts and, and everything else. So, I mean, that's just what I do. I mean...
Nope, there's no question. It looks terrific.
No, thank you.
Frank?
So there is a standard form of maintenance agreement that we use?
Yes.
Could we just circulate it at some point so we all can see what that says? That would be great.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. And why is it two years? I just...
I don't know. Again, these are things that have been in place, and it seems to just be what, what is, happens here.
This was in place when I was the Assistant Planner back in 1987.
But we could change it at any point, and when you look at the...
And it's in the, it's in the subdivision, yeah.
Right.
And it's in their subdivision rules and regs. Certainly, if it's something that the board feels when, when we review the subdivision rules and regs that we need to change, we can do it then.
We definitely don't have to do things just because things have always been done, but this is where we're coming from right now because of how it's been done.
And it's also...
But we can change it going forward.
And it's also in the subdivision rules and regs, which we can waive.
The guy we want to ask, the guy we want to turn to about how long it should be is not here.
Right, but it is in the subdivision rules and regs, which we...
If we're going to entertain changing it, we need to wait till Bob's here.
Yes. Yes.
He's the one that would-
And it requires a public hearing and, and other such sundries.
I wasn't proposing to change it.
Yeah. No, 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 no. You're, yeah.
Well, and-
Well, it's a good question.
It's been there forever.
If my memory serves, when the whole subject came up, the, the basic concern of the board was that the road was in less good condition than it is today. Thank you, Mr. applicant. But that after construction of a year and a half, it might need repair, whatever, and that until things settle and so on. So two years was kind of what came out as to make sense.
Okay.
But there was no reference or consideration for this as kind of the standard of what we've always done or anything else. It just seemed to be a reasonable number. One year might not have been enough. Two years is more than enough. And from where I sit, I don't think, I don't think it's required at all. The road's in better condition now than when, when it was first proposed.
I was thinking, as a, as a, as a process, as a-
No, but again.
And we knew, we need the other Bob here to-
Yeah.
And also, you know, not to belabor this, it's in the rules and regulations that there is a two-year maintenance agreement with a $1,000 bond. And it is to ensure that two years from now, it is in the condition, two years from now that it is today, and I have no doubt that Mr. Broderick will definitely do that. But until we change that, we need to abide by that.
Absolutely. So.
So I would entertain a motion to release the statement of condition for zero Chloe Lane, AKA 30 Chloe Lane, lot 14A, and to require an executed maintenance agreement and a $1,000 bond be posted.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Frank?
Approve.
Bob?
Approved.
Warren?
Approved.
And Charlene, I approve. And what you will need to do is get in touch with the community development department, and they will explain and iron out what you need to do going forward with this. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Have a great evening.
Yep.
All right. Thank you, too. Appreciate it.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye.
And next, we have release of statement of conditions for nine Betty's Path. This was Mr. Litchfield. I don't know if anyone is here for this.
I am here remotely, Madam Chairman.
Well, hello, Mr. Litchfield. How are you today?
Good. I am well, Ms. Greenholt, and members of the board. I will be brief because you have in front of you a very succinct staff report. This is essentially housekeeping. It was a statement of conditions reported back in 2010. In 2014, the road maintenance agreement was recorded. And sometime thereafter, in 2021, I believe, the bond was released. However, there was never a request to release the statement of conditions. And as in the staff report, while it is specific to lot four, it would be sensible to release all of the lots, one, two, three, and four. Lot two is owned by an entity called the Town of Chatham. And I don't think they're disreputable, and they won't cause any trouble for the planning board. So if the statement of conditions in its entirety can be released, we will leave you in peace.
Does anyone have any questions? And this did have a maintenance agreement, which that got released. So this was just an oversight at the time.
Exactly.
So it is in your packet just before the 11 by 17.
Does anyone have any questions? In that case, I would entertain a motion to release lots one through four of the statement of conditions for Betty's Path.
So moved.
Is there a second?
All seconded.
Frank, chair, roll call vote.
I approve.
Bob?
I approve.
Warren?
Warren Chain, approve.
And Charlene Greenholt, approve. Thank you very much, kind sir. Have a great evening.
Thank, thank you very much. I appreciate your assistance.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a request for comments for the comprehensive permit for Meeting House Road, the Penrose Project. We got a, which I feel is a very good staff report dated September 29th from Christine, outlining the criteria and where it might be not quite in keeping with that. You may have noticed that we also have a draft letter dated September XX, 2025, and talking to Christine. The, the items for consideration were just an example that she used based on the Main Street development that this board reviewed and sent a letter on. So on this, I'm wondering if it might be helpful to actually go through each of the criteria.
Do you want to answer the two questions you asked me first?
Oh, which-
This morning, this afternoon?
Oh, yes, thank you. I know I wrote that down. I did ask two questions this morning. One was regarding criteria number three, which was the, the parking, and that they're asking for a waiver on that, and that they are required under the zoning bylaw to have 84 parking spaces. They are proposing to provide 60 parking spaces, and therefore a waiver of 24 total spaces. And for the life of me, I can't remember the second question.
The second question was, when the letter will be due. So if you point out to me the items you want in the letter, we'll do similar to what we did with, with regard to the Main Street property. Art will be reviewing it, and then we'll send it all back, we'll send it back out to you for final comments. But we need to iron it out tonight because the letter is due by October 13th for the meeting on the 16th, and you are not meeting again until the 27th of October. So that is why.
Yes. And the board did do a preliminary letter to the zoning board of appeals back in August that, excuse me, that Christine and Art drafted and was submitted to the zoning board of appeals. And I think that was actually pretty thorough, myself. So I don't know if the board is comfortable. Do you want to go through each criteria? Do you want to re-review the comments that we made in the letter of August 28th? Is there anything we want to reiterate? What is the board's feeling on this?
Somewhere in the support documents for this item, I saw a reference to an updated plan by the applicant. And I'm wondering if that has made any recognition of the comments that we already made to the ZBA prior to their presentation to the ZBA. I feel a little bit as if we're now being asked to comment about a plan that none of us have seen.
So I do not have an updated plan at this point. We have not received any updated plans. There was an email that went out last week referring to some items. There was a pair, a couple of peer reviews done for things like traffic and things like that. So those plans were all available. I guess what I would suggest to you is to maybe consider having the criteria with the comments. If you just go through these, this piece of it and putting that in there, they're a little bit more specific than we had in the first letter. The first letter, we really kind of focused on the, the fact that the subdivision thing had not been ironed out. We had requested a couple of peer reviews. We had, 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 had a comment about the access to the other property. So if you want to give some direction in this way, as far as the criteria and the actual things that we don't have, we have also, we will end the letter, Warren, with a comment about having any updated plans and offering comment again throughout the process. We did try to do that with the last time to date for, for the other project. We have not been asked to submit another letter with updated plans or, you know, as a result of reviewing updated plans. But there's nothing preventing you from doing that, let's just say. So I would say the same thing in this case.
So why, I think then, why don't we go through each criteria? Do you want to run through it? Do you want me to run through it? Oh, thanks. You just don't want to talk.
Okay.
No, that's fine. So the first criteria, and again, this is under site plan review criteria, not subdivision criteria. So the adequacy and arrangement of vehicular traffic access and circulation, including intersections, road widths, pavement, surfaces, dividers, and traffic control. Staffs provided that the site plans do address these items in varying degrees, but is still unclear how the access to the abutting property is going to be resolved. The proposed resolution to the abutter access agreement item may change the layout in some way, so the agreement must be finalized prior to the completion of the ZBA review. Could not agree with that more. I don't know if we need to add any more to that, but I think that's pretty straightforward, myself. Does, do the board members agree?
Yes.
Yes.
Criteria number two, adequacy and arrangement of pedestrian traffic access and circulation, walkway structures, control of intersections with vehicular traffic and overall pedestrian convenience. Again, the staff has provided that the plan does not show the required connection to the off-street sidewalk to the south of the property. The town should consider whether the accessway sidewalk should continue the entire length of the eastern edge of the Penrose property, or if it is acceptable to end the access ramp within the Meeting House Road right-of-way. It would be my recommendation that we would request that they add as a condition to the zoning board's approval, a continued walkway from Meeting House Road down to the, the sidewalk along Route 28. We're not talking the bicycle path. We're talking a sidewalk. We've got a sidewalk coming out of the development to nothing.
Yeah. And as requested in the RFP, I think that was in our request for proposal. And if it was, we should say that.
Oh, oh, okay. It was in the, okay, in the RFP.
Because that's the basis on which they made their quote.
Perfect.
And also, I do recall that in our discussion, and I believe in the letter previously sent, there was a, a suggestion that the sidewalk that goes from the site down to Route 28 ought to be at least a five-foot wide sidewalk, not the minimum available for a sidewalk because of the volume that is likely to be on it. And it's not directly in this particular point for review. But also, we had a recommendation that separate from the sidewalk, there ought to be a bike path connection from the development down to the bike path, such that you did not have bicycle traffic interfering with, with pedestrians.
Are board members good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on, location, criteria number three, location, arrangement, appearance, and sufficiency of off-street parking and loading. Again, they have requested a waiver for the reduction of the number of parking spaces per unit and the overall total number of spaces. Again, the zoning bylaw requires 84 spaces required. They've requested 60 spaces, and that would be a waiver of 24. This is a 48-unit development. I don't, remind me again, Christine, this is 100% affordable, or is it, how, how does this break down? Do you, do you recall? I'm sorry, I should have-
Yes, no, I do not remember. To be honest with you, I-
I think it's, it's 80% or below. I don't think it's-
I don't want to say the wrong thing.
Yeah, I don't either. There's a very good chance that somebody at 30 or 60% is only going to have one vehicle. If it's 80 or above, they may have two vehicles.
Mm-hmm.
So if there's 42, there's an extra 18 parking spaces. I hate paving paradise and putting up a parking lot, but do we believe that 60 spaces is going to be adequate for the 42 units, plus any visitors who are going to come? I mean-
Yeah. No, I, I think it's totally not enough. And I, I guess they're probably giving us evidence of other buildings and other establishments where they have that proportion. But I, I'm pretty sure all of those other establishments have other, other places for people to park. And this is totally an isolated spot. There really is absolutely nowhere else for people to park. And so I don't think any kind of waiver, like the apartments in, you know, some of the other towns, Orleans, for instance, that, that project is, is comparable to this. So I, I, I am very concerned at the number there. I think it's going to create some kinds of really interesting issues with people putting their cars all over the place.
Alternative parking.
Yes.
I would just like to say that I agree.
I certainly agree with that. I'm not sure whether 84 is the number. But 60 is, I think, totally inadequate. I'd be inclined to go with the 84 that are required. Again, I have not seen a revised plan that might indicate where there's space for visitors, or how many spaces might be required for visitors, or for deliveries, or for service vehicles that might be there. But there is certainly some requirement for parking for those in addition to the residences. And again, there is really no available parking anywhere around there. And so it's, it's not, it's not an option to totally run out, you know, have people parking on Meeting House Road, or at least trying to figure out where to park. So-
Or the bike, the bike trail parking, or even the church.
Well, yeah. And those, I don't think ought to be part of this proposal that we would-
Totally agree.
And so I would be reluctant to change it at the moment until there's a very good cogent explanation as to how it can function in what would appear to be a place where more, rather than less, parking compared to other developments might be required. The part of me would say, too, that it might be a data point, a metric, to compare the number of spaces here with the number of spaces for the 1533 Main Street project. And, and, utilize that to say if we were okay with that number of spaces based on the occupancy and the income levels of those there, plus, 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 then that might give us comfort to reduce it from 84. But I see no basis to do so at the moment.
I, in looking at what we have for the example, they had requested for the Main Street development 1.85 parking spaces instead of two spaces per unit. I'm not sure what this works out to be. I didn't do the math in my head.
I believe it was 1.4.
1.4? I think the 84 is too many. I think the 60 is too little.
Well, 84 is the 1.8.
No, 84 is the two per unit.
No, there's 48 units.
No, there's 42 units in this.
42 units, okay.
How many bedrooms?
75. Again, there's going to be a number of children, if you assume-
Hopefully.
-in this development.
Right.
But I think the 84 is not necessarily needed, but 60 is, is too little in, in my-
Well, I'm sensing violent agreement here among the board, that 60 is too, many too few.
Yes.
And 84, I think we could comfortably say we could probably reduce that some. But I certainly would like to see some rationale put forward by the applicant as to what the number might be. And that has to take into consideration such things as service vehicles and maintenance vehicles and guests and, and, you know, because they're basically, there is no overflow option here.
Uh-huh. Uh huh.
Whatever might be there needs to have a place to park. Otherwise, it's creating a problem. So I would expect that other things equal, it would be at least as many proportionally as in 1533, but probably a little more than that.
I think if I did my math right, using the same number, 1.84, if I did my math, it's 78 spaces if we use the same math.
I think that's, I think that's, you know, closer to the right number, but I don't know that we have the basis to really come up with what the right number is. But the comment to ZBA ought to be, as we've discussed.
Are you comfortable?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Moving on, location, arrangement, size, design, and general site. Compatibility of buildings, lighting, and signs. Compatibility of buildings will be addressed by other reviewing entities unless the planning board has something specific to add regarding building height, layout, arrangement, et cetera. Planning board members typically require lower candle, foot candle lighting to facilitate dark sky initiatives. Lighting is required to be under 10 foot candles per unit. Signage appears to be minimal, but locations should be verified by the planning board. Again, with other groups, again, other groups will be reviewing types of material and design. That, to me, is pretty straightforward. I think originally we had asked that the taller units that were on the north side of the project maybe be flip-flopped, so that the shorter units were on the north, which abuts the.
The abutter.
The abutter, thank you. And to the south, there's nothing. It's the rail trail and woods.
We had also had some discussion and disagreement among the board, but the consensus was that we should hold to the 30-foot height, which I also would say was two and a half stories for any of the buildings. But that's in addition to suggesting that the lower structured, single-story buildings be somehow configured to be on the north of the property in relation to the abutters. And Frank, I think you're the expert on, and very crisply defined our suggestions with respect to lighting.
Oh.
Well.
In terms of the warmth of the lighting?
Yeah, warmth of lighting, intensity, candles, and so on.
Yeah, that.
Because I think that this is a very dark part of town, and the abutters have already suggested that they would like their dark sky reserved.
Christine, the specific recommendation, I think, was in the letter we did for Main Street. So we can just pick that up, yeah?
Yeah, I can certainly endorse that, but I wouldn't have presumed that.
Yeah, I can't remember the Kelvin that we came out with. I think it was more than 2,700. It might have been more than that, but I'm not sure. So whatever we did with the Main Street. I would just like to note, and I'm not one of those who is insisting on adherence to 30 feet.
I'm not either.
I think we have to allow some flexibility here. That's my view.
You know, I even am open to that, but I would like to see some effort on the part of the applicant to try and respond to the, to the height of the buildings that are on the north side, adjacent to the abutters. The topography of there is such that it goes, you know, the, whatever building is there is on a rise. And it's basically at least a full story above the house that's there. So a one-story structure is really two stories above height-wise, the abutter. So, you know, the, again, I would say, I'm not in favor, really, of permitting large buildings that are there. We haven't gotten to the setback requirements, but I also, at least on the north side, am very reluctant to be approving very minimal setbacks from the property line, considering the topography, considering the height of the buildings being proposed. You're going to have these giant structures that are looming, quote-unquote, my quote, over the abutters' property. But the consensus when we had our previous letter did say we had said we'd like to stay with the 30-foot height, and that really was two and a half stories as well.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure it said that.
I'm not sure we said that.
No, we said they were differing opinions on the.
Yes, we did.
Right, and it was not the consensus, so.
Well.
But in any event, I agree with you.
Yes, I'm in agreement with you as well on those.
That was brought up for the Main Street, where you've got buildings and, you know, development all the way around that, except on 28.
Again, I'm only saying my concern is just for the abutters to the north and the buildings that are on the north.
And that's why I said, if there's an opportunity to flip them so that buildings on the north side meet the 30-foot limitation.
I would venture to say that we have consensus that they ought to do everything possible in terms of height and setbacks to not be a problem for the abutter.
And I'd say screening as well.
And screening as well.
Between fencing and very high.
We'll get to landscaping.
Yeah, we will.
Yes.
So, all right, so we also discussed the inadequate supply of dumpsters in the location of one dumpster.
Yes, somewhere.
That's elsewhere in the.
Okay.
Yes.
I wasn't sure if that was part of the.
Yes.
And the flow of the traffic.
Okay.
But that probably is somewhere.
Yes. Just, we do have a member of the public who has their hand raised. I'm a little reluctant to hear from the abutters, or not even abutters, but hear from the public, as this is the board's review. If the board would like to hear from the public, we certainly can do that. But we have discussed this numerous times. I'm not sure if there's anything new somebody wants to bring, but I'll leave it up to the board. I'm not so inclined, just because I think at this time, it's really up to the board to provide our comments and input.
I think right at the moment, I'd prefer continuing through this. Otherwise, we won't get through it if we start having input from the public that's not required. But if we can finish it, then I would very much like to get the input from the public.
I agree with that. I think we should go through this and finish it.
So we will move on.
Yeah.
Are we good with that discussion? Adequacy of stormwater and drainage facilities. The presentation that the planning board received in June had a proposed site layout plan showing some civil engineering consideration for low-impact design, which are not included in the permitting plan sets. These items should be applied to the project absolutely.
And there's also 11, which touches on the same issue. Is it 11? Stormwater calculations should be redone. I mean, it's not just that they put out certain facilities, but they haven't actually proven that what they have is adequate.
Exactly. Did this get peer reviewed, this part of it, at all yet? I forget what the peer review was.
I believe the peer review was traffic and stormwater.
Okay, yes.
So what, when you had received the presentation from Penrose and Associates, it was before that they had actually submitted this application to the ZBA? And they had a plan there that they showed you, and that was what?
In a general manner.
In a, in a general manner, that showed these low impact. And that was something that Art and I had discussed when we were looking over the items for this.
Because this will have to comply with the state stormwater requirements. So, I mean, that's going to just take precedent over anything that we all say. It's got to comply with that. There's no way around that.
Okay.
Moving on, adequacy of water supply and sewage facilities. It's going to be served by town water and sewer. There's really not much more we can say about that. Seven, adequacy type and arrangement of trees, shrubs, and other landscaping constituting, constituting a visual and/or noise buffer between the applicants and adjoining lands, including the maximum retention of existing vegetation. Couldn't agree with Warren more that the buffer, and it's in here, the buffer along the northern property line should be enhanced to protect abutting properties from unintended impacts. The western buffer vegetation should be enhanced to shield residents of Buildings 1 and 2 from disruption from users at Twinefield property.
Can I ask a question? I mean, I'm not familiar with what happens at Twinefield property. I mean, is it loud and noisy? I mean, is that what we're?
It's a conservation area.
Sure.
But it's not, it's land that's being protected.
Right.
It's not a true conservation area in the grand scheme of what we generally think of conservation. It used to be a farm.
Right, but this has, I went and visited. This has to protect the residents from activities.
There are abutters, I believe, on either side, right? That are fairly close.
Oh, really?
Yes.
I thought the whole side was.
The top, or the north piece of it, I don't have it here in front of me. That has the conservation area, but there are some.
No, the north has the.
Ah.
The north has the abutters.
So it's not just, it's not just the Twinefield, it's the actual.
It's the actual, it's the actual abutters, like the ones that have the access agreement that is being worked on.
Okay, very good.
Yes. And I think also to protect.
That's on a different side. That's on the north side.
That is strictly north.
So what we're talking about is the western border, right? Just the western.
Just the western border, which is all Twinefield, so.
And here, and here we're worried about activities on Twinefield disturbing.
That's passive recreation.
And so why are we worried about that?
That's actually a good question.
Well, I thought it was the other way around.
Twinefield is directly west.
Right, and it's got.
And the abutters are directly.
Protection, which there is no, no, there's nothing here that could stop the kids from making a baseball field in the middle of it, or any. I'm just, there's nothing here protecting Twinefield.
Well, this board can't, quote-unquote, protect Twinefield except to increase a buffer, put a fence up, which I would not be in agreement. I think if there's a conservation area that people can enjoy and walk to from this development.
Yeah, but there's a difference between enjoying it by going through a nice path that's made and totally allowing you to run anywhere through the whole thing. I'm not, I'm not sure that we just say, oh, well, we don't need to protect that at all.
I don't think we, I don't think this board, or even the zoning board of appeals, I don't believe, can put a, or recommend a condition that's going to condition the use of Twinefield. There are.
Oh, no, no, I don't think that that's, I think.
Am I missing the point?
What Bob is trying to say is that this particular item was more to put a buffer from, like, to have the buffer, like, for Buildings 1 and 2, so that, to provide a little bit of protection to Twinefield and to, and to the buildings themselves, right? You want, you want to protect both the quietness or the conservation area itself and the actual, you know, residents of the building. So it's not necessarily doing something at Twinefield. It's doing something on this property to give a little buffer between both.
But I agree with Bob, that a bigger buffer to protect Twinefield makes a lot of sense, but.
Well, regardless of.
Right, so I think that that's what this is getting at, this statement here.
Okay.
If it's not worded the right way, you can give me additional wording.
Well, just take out the word "to protect the tenants," and I think you're already there, so.
Again, without disagreeing with anything said, because I basically agree. But the whole discussion about Twinefields and the proposed development was really that the new development will be a severe, a significant difference of ambiance and activity level and function from Twinefields, which has been set aside as a quiet, peaceful place. And I think that the character of each of those facilities being so different that it's highly appropriate to have a little bit of a buffer between the two.
Oh, absolutely.
So that neither, never mind the activities in one or the other, but they're just different in terms of their ambiance.
Yeah.
And that ought to be preserved to the extent possible.
Absolutely, I couldn't agree more. I just didn't want to have words that'll confuse the ZBA.
So what we're suggesting is that, thank you, sorry. What Christine and I were just saying is perhaps just flip-flopping to enhance disruption from Twinefield and shielding building, just flip-flopping those. So the emphasis is on the buffer to Twinefield for Buildings 1 and 2.
Okay.
Because we're not shielding the residents of 1 and 2 from Twinefield. It's more, anybody enjoying Twinefield won't be impacted by Buildings 1 and 2 of this development.
You've got it flipped.
Yeah, it's got to be flipped. Everybody good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Eight, in case of an apartment complex or other multiple dwellings, the adequacy of usable open space for play areas and informal recreation. Again, staff provided that this abuts the Twinefield conservation area along the west edge of the property, which increases access to passive recreation open space. The paved bike path on site provides direct access to the Old Colony Rail Trail, which runs across the southeastern portion of the development site. The planning board must reiterate the need for an easement for bike trail and the adequacy of bike racks throughout the site, given the limited storage many units will have for such items.
And again, this is where I think it would be appropriate to reiterate the board's suggestion that there ought to be a bike path connection separate from the sidewalk, from the development down to the, to the bike path.
I think that's what this is saying.
I think there is one on the plan.
And we're saying the southwest portion of the development.
No, but the point, the point being that it would be separate from the sidewalk.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
It's.
I believe that's clear in this statement, myself, but if others have wordsmithing they think would be more appropriate?
I had a question about the easement, how we go about the easement. To just, I think that the easement should be settled upon, the wording, and approved by town council. And that condition, that they sign that particular easement approved by town council should be a condition to whatever approval is given. Because there are many kinds of easements. To just say easement may not get you where you want to go. How wide should it be? You know, does it include other uses? For example, right now, the bike path is used by people with, you know, semi-motorized vehicles. You know, so we need to have the easement, I think, fleshed out with town council and specifically made, the wording of it, made a condition to any approval that is given by ZBA.
Good idea. I concur. Moving on, protection, this is number nine. Protection of adjacent or neighboring properties against noise, glare, unsightfulness, or other objectionable features. Staff has provided, as previously stated, the planning board requires lower candle foot lighting to facilitate, facilitate dark sky incentives, or initiatives, excuse me. Lighting is required to be under 10 candle foots per unit. And I think this goes back to what you said earlier, Frank.
To avoid the glaring, very, very white, industrial-type lighting.
Right, and using the wording similar to what was used on the Main Street.
Right.
And I believe we had some discussion, too, about suggesting that where appropriate, they have motion-censored, motion detector switches on them so that they're not on all night long.
Where allowable by law.
Well, let me, let me talk to that. In my neighborhood, I have buildings around me, and they've got their security lights on motions. So cars go by, or whatever, and they go on and off, on and off, all night long. And my daughter, for example, has trouble even sleeping because of the blinking on and off. If it just stayed on, you could get accustomed to it. But it's the on and off that creates the problem for people sleeping. the problem for people sleeping. And so, I'm just mentioning that because I have a personal experience with it, so...
The strobe drives me a little, but also, I don't know if in a multi-development site like this, you can do the motion ones. I don't know what code is for that. There are certain lights that have to be on all the time in a residential development. We can certainly request that they be as low lit as possible.
Agreed completely. Where required by law, they should be there, and they ought to be as low intensity as possible.
Yep.
The ones that I can think of where I would probably say I am not in a, have no objection to are, say, the light over the front door of the, of a particular unit. If there's nobody there, then fine. If you walk up to the front door, then a, a light will go on. And it would seem to me they don't need to be on all the time, and therefore, there's a benefit to preserving the dark sky to some extent if you don't have lights that don't need to be on, on all the time. I'm not here to say at all that security lighting ought to be motion censored. I think not, but I do think it ought to be downward facing. I think it ought to be the lowest candle power that is appropriate, adequate to the situation, that the, the light stanchions ought to be as low as possible, et cetera, et cetera. And it seems to me that I have not seen anything in the applicant's proposal that really addresses that concern, that whole panoply of concerns from the planning board. That's my only point, not that every light ought to be on a, on a motion sensor.
Okay, moving on. Item number 10, adequacy of fire lanes and other emergency zones and the provision of fire hydrants. Obviously, the fire department will verify compliance, vehicle circulation plan, ladder truck patterns was run for results. Not much more we can really add for that. Eleven, special attention to the adequacy of structures, roadways, and landscaping in areas with sus- susceptibility to ponding, flooding, or erosion. Again, the stormwater calculation should be redone with the actual area of the parcel and the results of the test pit analysis. I believe that was done as part of the peer review. Let's see, the waivers that were identified on, on sheet C4 of the application, one was the building coverage, the second was the front, inside, rear setbacks, and the total number of parking spaces. I, do we know what the build, I can't remember what the building coverage was, whereas there's such a large area that's not going to be developed at all or touched? And as long as the buffers around the development are adequate, enough to help buffer to any abutters, what does the board think about that?
I would agree. I think that's, that's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
On the front side and rear setbacks, I think it's really only from the side and rear. So, it would be the north property line and the west property line. Again, the north property line is where the abutters are. The west property line would be to Twinefield. And then, the east would be to the land that's going to remain open, and to the south would be down towards the bike trail, which is essentially going to remain open space. Again, to me, it seems as long as there is adequate buffer for the abutters to the north. We talked about the parking spaces. And then, additional items must be shown in the plan set and accounted for, including test borings that will have to be done and may have been done as part of the peer review. Underground utility line locations, I do believe that we want to definitely encourage that all utilities be underground in this development, as that is required in all the developments that we do. The proposed use of native and drought-tolerant landscaping must be clearly documented on the plan. I think that's crucial. Connection to the off-site sidewalk, per the RFP, we discussed that earlier. Low-impact design, we discussed that. Construction staging must be included in the application. I think reiterating these items, which were included in the RFP, is, is not a bad thing for this board to do. Bike racks, how many? Trash locations? I think when we reviewed it the first time, we felt that the trash locations were not adequate and were lacking. Stormwater concerns, we've talked about that, and traffic impact assessment, that was done. I don't know if the numbers were revised to consider peak summer traffic. There's calculations they can do. Even if they did them not in peak, there are standard numbers that can be done. Is there anything else the board can think of regarding this before I open it up to the public? For any new comments, please, if you have any? And I'm actually going to start with Stephen Buckley, as he actually had his hand raised first, if you don't mind, Elaine.
You asked if we had comments?
Oh, let's go to the board first, sorry.
Just with respect to trash locations and stuff, I think we had suggested too, they consider increasing the number of dumpsters, but also perhaps placing them between buildings instead of out in the, on the perimeter of the property. I thought that had some significant merit. Also, the, we had some discussion as well as for whether there should be any areas designated for picking up and dropping off, either deliveries, of which there are an increasing number, between FedEx, UPS, and, and the post office. And those, if, if, there ought to be such an area for designated dropping off, and it should be on the plans. And there had been some discussion, I forget if we put it in our former other recommendations for consideration of electric vehicle charging areas in the development, there being really no place even close by where there's any possibility, and there's certainly no way to sort of add it to your unit.
It's, it's required by the new, the new building code, and they say they've addressed that.
They say they've addressed it, all right. I have yet to see it, but...
They can't vary from the building code, so they're going to have to address it.
What they have to do is provide the potential, that wiring for, for, I think it's 10% of the parking spaces, something.
Okay, that's excellent, and we don't need to mention it. And also, with respect to the buffer along the northern property line between the abutters, I would suggest that we recommend, you know, solid fencing in addition to whatever natural trees and perhaps very tall evergreens, as well as, in general for the site, but especially on the northern boundary, retention to the maximum extent possible of existing trees. If, if in fact the setbacks remain what they have proposed, they're basically going to be clear-cutting the entire place, and there won't be any trees along the northern border, there just can't be, if it's five feet from the property line. And so, I would suggest we consider recommending retention of the trees and putting in a solid tall fence, eight feet maybe, along the northern border with the abutters.
I don't think they can do an eight-foot fence. It's considered a spite fence, I believe.
Well...
The maximum height...
Solid fencing, as I say, the topography is such that you'll be looking over the fence from, from either side at the other buildings. But anyway, having it be solid fencing in addition to retaining trees and, and enhancing the, the plantings to try and provide a, an insulation, a buffer between the property and the abutters. But those are the only things that I picked up that perhaps ought to be added.
Is everyone amenable to the fence idea? I certainly am.
Eight foot or...
The maximum allowable under...
Maximum allowable?
Under code.
Okay.
I think retaining as many trees as possible is, is a good idea, and as long as they're healthy trees. I would hate to see a number of scrub pines remaining, because we have a pine issue with pine-bore beetles. So, that's the only thing I'm gonna, on that.
There are a large number of hardwood trees that are there, so...
Yeah, tho- those aren't evergreens, but certainly, if there are substantial specimen trees worth saving, I think they should be saved. One other thought I had is, and I know this has been done in a number of other developments throughout the Cape, is to see if a, there can be a bus stop within the site for the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority. As some, there may be a number of people who are going to be relying on that form of transportation.
I think it's an excellent idea, but it's very tight as it is.
Looping around, it, there have been tighter developments where it has worked out.
There are a number of other organizations, Seafall, you know, Council on Aging, even the Community Center, the Veterans Administration, all have transportation capabilities as requested.
Yes, as requested, but if we can make this...
It's going to be more than just public transportation, that it would be looking for a place to have a stop.
And if there was a bus stop somewhere within the site for whatever variety, but certainly the Regional Transit Authority, you know, a dedicated, not outside, but inside.
It would be good.
Again, it's certainly not our purview to say where a school bus stop ought to be, but there might well be a need for one.
No, that's going to be the school.
No, I understand that, but it's yet another bus that might be around in the neighborhood.
Anybody have anything else? All right, Mr. Buckley, if you would like to make any comments, if you have anything new and different, that would be great.
Yes, I think I do, Madam Chair. Related to, well, let me, they have to do with criteria number four, which talks about location, size, design, and general site compatibility of buildings, lighting, and site. And certainly, I have those concerns with the former Buckley property at 1533 Main Street. I, I don't want either project to stand out as, you know, as, as a housing project. I wouldn't like that it would sit in, of course, with, and I think everybody says that, but you have to be careful that we ask for, you know, that we, what we ask for. Anyway, I went over to Orleans, because Penrose has a property over there by St. Kek Corner, and I wanted to see what kind of lighting and, you know, the layout and what it looked like over there. And the lighting seems to be the same, it looks like the same that I've seen in the drawings. I didn't go at night, but I did notice, though, that there were two electric hookups for electric vehicles, whatever that's called, I forget what, yeah. Anyway, they were already there, not, not wired underground and ready, and so, anyway, I just wanted to point out that I go, oh, well, there's at least two, and I don't know how many units are at that location, maybe 20 or 30, something like that. Anyway, I just thought I'd pass that on, that they, apparently, Orleans got them to put it in, or, or for some reason, it, it shows. I'm just wondering if, that would be a good question to ask Penrose. How did those come to be in Orleans, and why aren't there, you know, how come, are we going to get them here too, either at, at both locations? So, I just want to point that out. Getting back, and related to lighting, glare, I had also suggested at the former Buckley property on Main Street, that they use even synthetic siding for seat, that resembles cedar shingles, so it looks more like the houses that are around in that area. And I realize South Chatham has a lot of clavbered buildings, but as you go Meeting House and in-between South Chatham and, and other places, it's predominantly, you know, gray cedar shingles. And right now, it's all going to be all clavbered, and white cream, and light gray. But still, I think that if we've all seen houses through the trees, sometimes you have to look to see, it's like, oh, there's a house over there, but it's all gray, gray cedar shingles. It's almost like camouflage, if you will, hiding it. So, whereas if you had had a white clavbered building, you could see it through the trees, and you wouldn't need as much screening, you know, to put up there, which is complement, you know, the idea. So, that's what, one thing, it's unclear whether or not they can, they have said something about fire safety and can't put in this or that, and I, I'd like to see where it's those, the requirements that say that they have to put in clavbered all around. So, and the only other thing I wanted to say was that I was, you know, if I was a young family and I had kids playing in the Twinefield, it would be nice to look out the window and see if the kids, you know, they're still playing out there, you know, and I don't think they can make a ball field there, but they could play, throw a football or play catch or something like that, or throw a frisbee. I guess that's passive. And so, and to be able to look out and see the sunset, instead of looking out and seeing a giant U staring you in the face. So, just, it's just a thought that came to mind when you were talking about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Elaine?
Yes, thank you very much. I will try to be quick. I think all of my comments meet your criteria. If not, I apologize. In terms of the entrance into Meeting House, it is directly opposite the church entrance, and if you look at that, there is a ravine directly across from that. So, the entrance is basically going to be a bridge, it's going to have to be built up. And according to topography, those, that ravine is about 13 feet deep. It's going to have a split rail guardrail. There are no specifications on their plans, on Penrose's plans, as to the quality of the wood used, or whether or not it's going to be steel reinforced, which it should be according to MASH, which is the manual for assessing safety hardware in, in things such as that. If someone, if one, a bus or a delivery truck or a car hits those and breaks through them, they're going into the ravine, it's going to be very dangerous. The children have to walk about 245 feet from the complex to the road. That's a long way for little kids, number one. And according to the design, there are only, sorry about that, there are only two split rails. Kids can climb through those. They do it on a bet. I've got three grandkids. They would end up in the ravine. So, I think that any, anything they put up there, it's going to look like, basically, by the drawings, what's on George Rider Road near Ocean State Job Lot, and that's just not acceptable in my view. No indication that Penrose has reached out to the schools on bus routes to see if children are going to have to cross that street either during pickup or coming home. 137 is a state road regardless of what they're saying, and I don't think they've reached out to DOT. In terms of parking spaces, we need more parking spaces. This place is really isolated, there are no stores, no pharmacy, no doctor, no schools, no banks, no nothing. And if we're encouraging families, you need somebody to go to work, and you need somebody to do all the other stuff, like go to the doctor, go to the hospital. They shouldn't have to take public transportation, pick up their kids after school. So, I would urge you to stick with the two assigned parking spaces per unit, and then have assigned guest parking. They should have that, so it can be monitored. Otherwise, guests could come, take up the spaces, somebody's put on a full day of work and they come home and they have no place to park. If this is going to be built like 1533, we just learned that these buildings are on slabs, there's no basement. So, there's no place for personal effects and insulation. So, I would hope that someone asked that question, why didn't we know there are no basements, and what are you going to do about it? and what are you going to do about it? There is no green space or communal areas to speak of. They're selling it as they can go and play in Twine Field, as if that actually belongs to Meeting House, like, oh, it's right there, you know, have a ball. So if you're concerned about that, that's not how it's being promoted. There is no place for children to play safely, to ride their bikes either on or off the property, so there has to be a sidewalk and a bike path down to, down to the bike path and to Route 1, Route 28. To actually encourage kids to play in the woods and the ravines, they actually put up a picture of kids playing in a ravine, because that's the only green space there is, and they had what looked like a slide from Ocean State Job Lot. And they were trying to say, this is good for kids to do this. I'd consider that an attractive nuisance. I don't know how it could pass safety protocols, and I think it would be a tremendous liability for Penrose and Chatham if it's, if it's approved. Units one and two are the two units to the immediate left of the entrance. They are over the ravine. The idea of children in a second-floor bedroom falling out a window or having to evacuate from a fire would mean a 43-foot drop. There is nothing down there except a ravine. I don't think this is a buildable lot. Penrose has said that they would never have taken on this project at Meeting House because of the challenges of it, except that they needed it in order to make a profit on 1533 Main. So this is kind of a throwaway for them, which is pretty disturbing. And they also keep comparing it to Nauset Green and Eastham that they build. Eastham had six units per acre versus our 16 at Meeting House. They are seven miles north of Orleans, off the beaten path. They have plenty of parking there, and they're saying they're determining occupancy based on that. Chatham is far more desirable than that location. They are underestimating the occupancy, when 65% of the units at Meeting House are two- and three-bedroom. You can put six people in a bedroom, and they don't have to be related. Three of the six might be working, and they're going to take up extra spaces that would normally belong to one or the other. So I hope you stick with the maximum required to and required guest parking, so it can be monitored. When I review projects, I look at it, would I want my children or grandchildren living here? And I wouldn't. I don't think it's family-friendly, and I don't think it's child-friendly. And I hope a lot of work is done on this, and these things are downsized, so that the quality of life that we should expect in Chatham, we give to the people living there. It's more than just having a place to lay their heads. The quality of life should be better than these places are offering. Thank you very much, and I hope I didn't delay you too much.
No, thank you, Elaine. Any board members?
I did look up the EV requirements, in over 26 parking spaces, 10% have to be EV-ready. And that doesn't mean they all should just be ready. I think there's a requirement as to how many have to be installed at the beginning, but I haven't found that, so. It, they're not just going to make them all ready.
They need to comply with whatever, whatever the state code is for that.
Yeah.
Warren, did you have something? Okay. All right, thank you, folks, for your comments. They are appreciated. I think we are going to move on. I know we have some documents to sign. Was there anything else that you wanted to bring up for this evening?
No, you have, the only thing I would say to you is you have correspondence, as always. That's just, just for your information that comes to the board. And the next meeting will be October 27th at 5:00 PM.
Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Sir, second.
I second.
Roll call, Frank.
I approve.
Approve.
Warren.
Approve.
And I'm Charlene Greenhough, and I approve. Thank you all for a great meeting this evening.
Great job.